Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for coming out this evening and we, after a little bit of a late start, we were hoping we'd have more people here by now. But um we will get the ball rolling and before all else, I will ask Mrs. Garraway to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Most merciful Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to gather together this evening. Together, together as a group who are desirous of seeing the growth of an important sector in our economy. Heavenly Father, be with us, guide us in our deliberations, and help us to make right decisions, all of them pleasing to you. All these are asked in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, O Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Angela, and again, good evening to all. Honorable Premier, Permanent Secretary in the Office of the Premier, and Deputy Premier, good evening all, welcome. We have a two-fold mission today, one of which is to just give a very brief update on the Tourism Division's activities over the last four to five months, four months, as well as to introduce a new, a new concept and the, the persons who have all been invited to and selected to sit on the new Advisory Council that you will hear a lot more about from the Honorable Premier. First, I will just like to ask Permanent Secretary Castle to come and deliver a few remarks.
Thank you, Director. Honorable Joseph Farrell, Premier. Honorable Dr. Samuel Joseph, Deputy Premier and Minister of Communications, Education and Labour. Prospective members of the Monserrat Tourism Stakeholders Advisory Council, tourism staff, media, good evening. As the Director has alluded to, we are extremely pleased to have reached this important accomplishment, whereby a formalized structure for stakeholder engagement and feedback is being institutionalized. Amidst the challenges that are now being faced by the tourism sector, primarily as a result of the COVID-19 global pandemic, we have embarked on targeted planning and preparation. We are doing so to allow destination Monserrat to rebound. We cannot afford to lose sight of the vision for the tourism industry, sustainable development through quality tourism. At this time, our efforts are focused on standards, industry training, product development and enhancement, and of course, strategy rationalization and implementation. In the presentation later on, you will be updated on the industry training and product development activities that we've completed and those that we are planning for the immediate future up to the remainder of this financial year. The strategic direction for tourism is hinged on an extensive body of strategy development work over the few years, mainly speaking of the Tourism Master Plan 2015 to 2025, the Tourism Policy of 2016, and now more recently, the Tourism Strategy 2019 to 2022. As mentioned earlier, there has been an impetus to cushion the impact of the downturn and to revive the tourism sector. From a fiscal standpoint, visitor expenditure for January to September 2019 was 21 million. So you can see the impact of the contribution. And for the same period in 2020, a 37% decline to 13.1 million. Also comparing spend in the non-peak months from April to September 2019, 8.4 million. And this year, only 0.43 million, or a whopping 95% reduction. So since April 2020, the harsh reality is tourist excursionists, cruise passenger and yacht arrivals have significantly declined, resulting in the loss of jobs, disruption to livelihoods, and of course hardship for workers across the entire tourism sector, be it in the areas of accommodation, restaurant, tour and taxi, arts and craft, recreation, entertainment, and so on. So now more than ever, a multi-stakeholder approach is needed to assess and to steer recommendations for the development of policies, strategies and projects. Recommendations that will leverage the unique asset of the destination and to contribute again in a significant way to the socioeconomic development of Monserrat. In closing, I extend appreciation to the prospective members for accepting our nomination to serve on the Monserrat Tourism Stakeholder Advisory Council. Our aim is to improve the competitiveness of the tourism industry, working collaboratively with the stakeholders, embracing, one, a scientific approach. And here I'm speaking of examining the current market trends, analyzing tourism statistics and visitor feedback. Two, tactical thinking, confirming the Monserrat brand. What has been tried and tested and how these remain relevant within the new realities. And three, inclusiveness. All of us together because we are aiming to reemerge on a solid footing. Thank you for your commitment.
Okay, so as I said, I'll give a brief update on what the Tourism Division has been doing for the last few months. Start off in the area of product development. It was the intention of the Tourism Division to commence industry training for stakeholders from the end of March of this year. But we all know what happened. When we came up for air, we contacted all of the training organizations who had provided, who had previously submitted proposals to determine if they could deliver their programs virtually. Once this was put in place, we began a series of programs in July at the Cultural Centre and right here at the Credit Union Building. All of the programs included segments that spoke to protocols for COVID-19 in addition to the, the key areas. And those would have been the successful taxi driver facilitated by the Caribbean Tourism Organization, managing the customer experience facilitated by NIBS and Associates out of Antigua, cruise destination preparedness facilitated by the Aquila Centre for Cruise Excellence out of New Brunswick, Canada, and housekeeping for the tourism sector facilitated by Transitions Consulting, which is based in Antigua, but the two instructors were from Antigua and Barbados. And I, I think we, we were able to manage quite well, particularly the, the housekeeping program, which we had here as well as at a remote location at the Grand View Hotel for the last two days so that we could have done the, some of the practical training. That was the fullest class, if you, if you want to call it a class. We had about thirty-five participants and they were by far the liveliest bunch. You know, everybody had questions, everybody was willing to talk and give their little anecdotes and so on. Upcoming programs would include social media for tourism communications, presenting and packaging of souvenir items, and tour guiding. The Tourism Division has also been sharpening its skills. The team at the division having completed courses in digital marketing, destination policy and planning, project management, and product development. And at a slightly higher level, the boss of the Tourism Division has also been sharpening her skills in the area of brand management. So the Volcano Interpretive Centre remains our signature project and it's about to pick up some speed. The proposed venue for, for it is at the site of the National Museum. We've completed surveys as well as conceptual drawings. Next week, we do a presentation to the Board of the National Trust, following which the scope of works will be finalized and we go out to tender. And we expect, well, works will start in the early part of 2021. Beach facilities upgrade, we completed an upgrade at Woodlands Beach. I, I imagine that all of you would have visited Woodlands Beach between, when was it, June, I think, that we completed that project and now. We've done a lot of paving, making it easier to access the, the main building as well as the beach area. The rest of this project includes the installation of shower and bathroom facilities at Isles Bay, Lime Kiln, Old Road Bay and Little Bay. We have received bids. Preliminary evaluations will be completed by tomorrow and we expect the works to commence shortly thereafter. Hiking trails upgrade, phase two of the trails upgrade is on. We've conducted an audit of the five trails that are to be completed, namely the Duberica Sava, Underwood, Dry Waterfall Trails, the Katy Hill Trail System and Hope Ridge Trail. The scope of works is being finalized and the request for codes will go out this week and works to commence by the end of November. One of the things that we hope to accomplish with the help of our stakeholders is the development of a, a tagline for all of our communications. So we have developed a new website that was launched last month and we have been able to, to give a, a small platform to all of the service providers on the island in the areas of hospitality, food and beverage, transportation, et cetera. Some people are equipped to, you know, take advantage of that. I would say many are not, but those that are not, you know, your, your, your listing is there. Anybody from any part of the world can see who you are and, and, you know, the basic services that you offer. And so we'll be encouraging a lot of the, the stakeholders, you know, to really up their skills in terms of, of, you know, using the website as a, as a marketing tool. New features will be introduced regularly and that's, you know, essentially to keep the, the website fresh. So things like blogging and, and changing up photography, adding videos and so different content, that will happen on a regular basis. So back to the tagline. Previous iterations have been, and I'm sure all of you would remember, Monserrat, a Caribbean treasure spectacular by nature, off the grid, and come, we have time for you. Some were popular, some were not popular, some were not liked at all. There is need however, for a strong tagline that clearly defines the brand essence of the destination in a few catchy, easy to remember words that can easily complement our logo. A logo which continues to test positively on the international market. Although print advertising is, is being minimized, it seems by the minute, the division also, also supported the, well not supported, we, we took part in advertising campaigns with Caribbean Beat Magazine. This is the in-flight magazine for Caribbean Airlines. You know, we were looking at, at the goings-on with, with Liat and, and some of the other carriers that, you know, would, could feed into, into Antigua and then on to Monserrat. You know, we all know that there's uncertainty with, with Liat. So we, we joined hands with Caribbean Beat Magazine, which has a varied readership, not just in the Caribbean, but in international gateways as well for Caribbean Airlines. And we participated in their digital magazine, they went digital for the first time in September. And so we participated in the September, October and November, December issues using a theme of green adventure. As I said, we, we also submitted, supported the publication of the History of Monserrat Cricket, published by a Monstration who lives in, in Florida with, with some advertising, print advertising. And we also participated in interviews with regional and international media, including one with PIX11 in New York back in August. And of course, right now, a lot of the questions, what are you doing about COVID? When are you reopening your borders? And tell us a little bit about Monserrat. Attracting the media to the destination to help tell our story will feature very prominently in our marketing strategy. In fact, the last group of journalists that we hosted, they were here for St. Patrick's Festival and were actually at ZJB when Premier announced that all festival activities had to come to an end. But they are all very keen to return to complete their assignments. And of course, Premier, they totally understood why we took that decision, let me just add that. We've enjoyed partnerships and dialogue with both public and private sector organizations at a heightened level since the pandemic took charge of our lives and really our economies as well. So we would have worked with the Caribbean Tourism Organization, we are a member. And with them, we would have engaged in international communications, webinars, trade shows, training. And Monserrat is now, as of last week, the Vice Chair representing British Overseas Territories. The Caribbean Hotel and Tourism Association, where we would have done webinars and training as well as some consultation, we actually consulted with CHTA before, you know, putting together the, the whole framework or while we were putting together the framework of the Advisory Council. Some of you in the room, if not all, may have received invitations to participate in some of their webinars over the last few weeks. Carfa, of course, we would have collaborated on the COVID-19 protocols. Last week, they would have launched the Caribbean Travelers Health Assurance Stamp for healthier, safer tourism, as well as a, a mobile app, the Caribbean Travelers Health Mobile App. And of course, the OECD at the ministerial level. Virtual trade shows. We participate, this is one of the events in which we participated with the Caribbean Tourism Organization. They hosted the Caribbean Virtual Roadshow back in September. This event targeted travel agents and advisors in the UK and Ireland, of which approximately 130 were in attendance. This has allowed us to start developing a much-needed database of travel professionals to whom we can do promotions and training webinars in the future. And more recently, very, very recently, World Travel Market. So World Travel Market is the second biggest travel and tourism trade show in the world. And while Monserrat has participated in this event in the past, it's a very expensive proposition and it's easy to get lost amongst the thousands of exhibitors there. Even though, you know, in the past Monserrat would have, would have been a part of the, the Caribbean Pavilion. Sorry about that. While we did not have plans to, to participate in the live version or the traditional version of, of the event for the foreseeable future, and mainly because of cost, we felt that participating in virtual World Travel Market was a cost-effective way to directly target the travel trade and media, still operating under the banner of the Caribbean. So we partnered with the Caribbean Tourism Organization, UK Europe Chapter. That event began today. Leading up to today was extremely tiring and taxing, is a first for everybody. So it's the first time they've done it in this format. And certainly the, the first time that we are participating in, in something of this scale. So today, there were a series of conferences, conference sessions and we would have had a few meetings well today, that, that went well. The system does have some bugs in it and hopefully they will have those worked out by tomorrow because the, the program ends on Wednesday. So the trend of participating in virtual trade shows and promotions is going to feature more prominently in the Division's marketing strategy going forward. As you would imagine, because of the, you know, complete slowdown in, in activity, in travel activity, that has also been complimented, if, if I could use that word, by a slowdown in marketing activities. But marketing budgets across the board have been slashed. Most destinations, certainly in the Caribbean, slashing budgets by, you know, well over sixty percent. But the, the, the trend of the virtual, virtual promotions is definitely growing and, you know, a lot of, a lot of different organizations that would have had these massive trade shows, both in Europe and, and North America, have begun to put their programs in the, the, the virtual environment. So it, it also makes it very cost-effective for us to be able to attend these. And because of how they are set up, we can actually go in, see who's attending, see which media are going to be present, and request meetings directly with them. Whereas if we were there in person, that would not, that would have been a very difficult proposition. Because sometimes, yes, you have the opportunity to set up meetings in advance, but that was not always an easy proposition. So you would be there at your booth and, you know, you, you may or may not see the people that you, that you would want to see. So that is, as I say, going to feature very prominently going forward and we are looking forward to, to participating in those types of events. And that's, that's it, very short and sweet. We, we can take some, some questions if, if there are any before moving on to the next item.
Yes, I had the privilege of attending one of those trade shows many years ago. And at that event, there were many travelers, visitors who would want to see the show. How is that being done? How do people get access to seeing the trade show? Is that not part of it this time around?
So the, the, the consumer side of, of some of the shows, they would offer paid attendance. So, you know, they, they, there'll be a nominal fee for, for consumers to attend some of these. World Travel Market is not going that route. Although the, the live version, they started to toy with having a consumer day. But they're not going with that certainly for the, this inaugural virtual World Travel Market. But there are others that have a consumer component to it and, and it's a paid, a paid version.
Initially, you, there were plans to add some other components to the website in terms of booking. Is that still something that's under consideration? And any plans to take the Tourism Division back into a separate entity versus remaining under GOM?
GOM, right. Regarding the website, when we were, when we were researching and, and getting in contact with a lot of the service providers, we realized that there's a huge gap in terms of, of how they treat with information and communication. So that the, the natural fear was that, and we actually experienced this last year at Sailing Week in Antigua, where, where we had a booth, where, you know, somebody's trying to get information and make a booking and they're not getting any response. And so putting, putting a booking engine on the site to, to sort of stimulate that type of activity, it is not a dead idea, but we didn't want to bring it out as yet in this first iteration. But it, it is a, a component that can be added and, you know, I'm, I'm, I have no doubt that, that we will add that component, you know, within the, probably within the coming year. The other one was the Tourism Division. The, I think there are a lot of things happening behind the scene that, that would, would inform the, the way forward for the, the Tourism Division. But the, the prospect of, of having regular and, and, you know, more formal collaboration with the stakeholders was definitely recognized and that's what has brought us here this evening.
Yes, good evening. You mentioned with regard to the, the VIC, that it's at the stage of an assessment of the scope of work. So I can't remember exactly what you said.
Right.
I'm a little apprehensive about that in the sense that for us, some of us tourism stakeholders to be involved in that initial process because lots of times when we reach to a design phase, et cetera, then it's too hard or too difficult to change, rather if it's done in the conceptual stage. Because I want to always underline or remind people in the sense of the Interpretation Centre. As I've watched some of the other regional interpretation centers like the one at Antigua, et cetera, that there's a move with interpretation centers now to utilize technology rather than the standard statue-type images, et cetera. And I know the technology part is a very, very expensive component, which, knowing what some of the figures were for the Interpretation Centre, we might, using real technology, it might be even more expensive than the, the, doing the project itself. So some rationalization there, I'm really concerned about that and to see how that aspect would be.
So a couple of things, very shortly, we will be pulling together a, a team, you know, that will sort of act as an oversight committee for the development of the VIC. We are constrained by dollars so that we, we had the good fortune of being able to continue the dialogue and working with the company that had been contracted to do this project many years ago. Yes, the, the issue of technology is, is very important and, and that would have been the big difference between what was being discussed then and where we are today. So it, it is being factored in. The, the location, as I say, we have a proposed site. You know, individually, people have said, yes, we, we, we're good with this. But we, we have to have the official, you know, make, make a, a presentation to the National Trust, which has oversight over the, the museum, and, and get their official stamp of approval. Once we have that, you know, we, we will have the, the committee in place, you know, going along every step of the way from, from there on.
You spoke about the tagline. And what's the process then for developing the, the new tagline?
You are flying Sharice as well. We had, we had that conversation today and a little, a little work in progress. So we, we will, we will, we will have a little more on that going forward. But that is one of the things that we would want, you know, the, the support and, and input from the Stakeholder Advisory Committee. So right away, there's know that there's work to be done. All good under the water, Miss Aston?
I, I will say that we had someone email today about coming in on a wind star in February and wondering about making a booking. I don't know if there's a way that we should be answering these emails, if, if that is something that's in the works or something that you can speak to at least.
Regarding, regarding reopening of the borders, there are much higher powers than Warren in the, in the room tonight. But I know specifically with, with regard to the cruise sector, you know, we, we're seeing a constant pushback of, of their opening, you know, resumption sailing dates. So we've heard So we've heard, we've heard January and February, um so you have a direct uh request for February. You know, I I and we've gotten, there have been some stakeholders who have gotten similar types of requests, not for diving, of course, but for accommodation and so on. And um, you know, we we've advised, you know, short term, just continue to maintain the dialogue. And as soon as we have, you know, a fixed date or period, you know, we will get back to them. But as as of right now, uh I cannot see, you know, when that period uh would be.
We had done some work the other day on um the cruise, the resumption of cruise tourism, and using Italy as an example, because Italy had started at least six to eight weeks ago. But now there is a spike of COVID in Italy. So can you address that with regard to this whole thing about resumption of cruise tourism? Thank you.
Well, the the spikes that are taking place um in the north, in the in the Great White North, those have impacted the the launch dates for resumption of of sailings. So, you know, we we knew, what, a month ago, month and a half ago, that cruisers had resumed in Europe, and we had gotten insights into what was happening in Italy, as you as you mentioned, where, you know, only groups were allowed, only, sorry, not groups, but only people who had specific tours booked were allowed um ashore. You couldn't, as an individual, just decide to come off the boat and go wandering in whatever city you were in. So it was, you know, very restricted. Um of course, the the protocols, the protocols were were fully in place with the face masks and the social distancing, and only certain sites and attractions were available to to the tour operators. But with the spikes, as I said, that that has influenced the the continued pushback of opening dates. So the Roslyn, what's the one that's home porting in Barbados again? The cruise line that's home porting in Barbados? You remember? No, not Silver Sea. Anyway, one of the lines that we get um is is home porting in Barbados, and they are set to start soon, um not to Montserrat, but, you know, to certain other islands. I don't know if that is going to be pushed back at all um in the in the coming days or weeks. But they were to have started, I think, at the beginning of of November, so it would be interesting to see, you know, if any if any change has been made there. But once our destinations' borders are closed, then, you know, the 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 cruise business could be back up and running, but if your borders are closed, then you are obviously out of that, you know, out of that rotation, so to speak. Okay, so I would invite again Honorable Premier to come and deliver the feature address.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Ladies and gentlemen, a very good evening to all of you. It is truly a pleasure to welcome all of you here this evening on what is undoubtedly a major milestone in the development of our local tourism sector. The last seven months have been difficult for all of us who call ourselves Monstrations and call Montserrat our home. COVID nineteen has dealt the entire world the heavy blow, and Montserrat certainly has not been left out. So to say that the pandemic is the biggest threat that we've ever seen in our economic and even lifestyle, it is a mild understatement. The government has taken tough measures, made tough calls to ensure that we keep the economy afloat up to this point. We have been able to weather the storm so far. A number of protocols have been developed and proposed by the reg- by the region's main public health authorities, organizations including CARICOM, O E C S, CARPA in conjunction with tourism sectors in the region. In fact, just last Thursday, CARPA would have launched the Caribbean Travel Health Assurance Stamp to help safeguard tourism and a new health app. These are developed to secure the confidence of the region's citizens or travel partners and prospective visitors around the world for the travel and tourism sector to thrive and for it to develop in a sustainable manner. Governments need to provide the supportive physical, regulatory, and physical and social environment, an environment that is also conducive to business development. Indeed, governments' role in travel and tourism is generally to set national tourism policy, determine and allocate the tourism budget, establish an appropriate legislative framework, oversee the administrative structure of policy delivery, assess and influence wider government policies impacting on tourism, and put in place appropriate research, statistics, and evaluation programs. And for many governments, that role also extends to destination, marketing, and project development. But it doesn't stop there. Successful tourism destinations also have a strong and vibrant private sector working in collaboration with the government and the national tourism organization. And this brings us to a main reason for us to be here tonight. The Office of the Premier and the Tourism Division have recognized that there is a need to strengthen the relationship between government and tourism stakeholders. The formation of a Tourism Stakeholder Advisory Council to inform tourist policy and strategies for Montserrat can set the tone in realizing the vision of the local tourism industry, which is sustainable development through quality tourism, whereby it ensures that tourism development on the island keeps pace with national and socioeconomic development. The main objective would be to improve the competitiveness of the tourism industry using a multi-stakeholder approach. The T S S C would help define Montserrat branding position, and by focusing on the development of the island's tourism product and ensuring adherence to industry standards and best practices, it would play a major role in the delivery of brand promised. What are the objectives of the council? The main objectives of the of the advisory council would be to serve as a as a think tank and in an advisory capacity on matters of global tourism, marketing, and product trends. It will advise the government as to how Montserrat can take advantage of these trends, as well as to mitigate against the potential loss of market share and decrease in its expenditure. The council would be the primary conduct, sorry, the primary conduit for representation of the tourism sector to the government of Montserrat by providing advice to government, the Tourism Division, on tourism-related issues that also have an impact on the wider community. As it did in the formation of the Montserrat Tourism Master Plan of twenty fifteen and more recently, the Tourism Strategy of twenty nineteen, government would also seek out recommendations from the advisory council on the development of policy and strategy relating to tourism in Montserrat. We are confident that this enhanced collaboration would identify gaps in the tourism product offering, as well as barriers to providing positive visitor and experiences, marketing recommendations on how these gaps and barriers can be addressed. Other objectives of the P of the T S A, T S S C include helping to grow the visitor's economy on a more sustainable basis, informing the establishment of tourism industry standards, providing input to key marketing and branding activities to support increased visitor demand to Montserrat, assisting in building stronger local community awareness of the importance and value of tourism to the economy, recommending tourism industry training and capacity building initiatives to help build positive relationships between government and all tourism stakeholders on the island. It is to act as a sounding board for new tourism ideas and initiatives. It also provide will provide feedback for tourism campaigns and initiatives and to identify new tourism-related partnership opportunities. And finally, it will ensure that there is an alignment between the tourism-related objectives and activities of the various local partners and national tourism in initiatives. The composition shall consist of a maximum of fifteen members, including professionals including professionals from the following sectors: Accommodation, to include hotels, villas, and B and Bs, Tour and Taxi Association, Montreal Industry and Commerce, Industry of Chamber and Commerce, Montreal National Trust, Sites and Attractions, Cruise Line Agent Tour Operators, Water Sports, Air Transportation, Restaurants, Academia, Media, Entertainment, Culture, Arts and Craft. And those numbers don't big. Members are invited to serve in a voluntary capacity on the council based upon their expertise and insight about the sector that they represent. Their term shall run from November ninth, today, twenty twenty, through to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And we are grateful for the commitment shown by the council members for agreeing to be part of this consultative body from twenty twenty two. In terms of the council members will forward calendar year. I must also add here that the work to be done does not just talk, does not fall on the shoulders of the council members to whom you will be introduced shortly. It is anticipated that subcommittees would be established and would include other members on the ranks of the private sector to deliberate over a specific matter, for example, accommodation, transportation, and so on. As I mentioned earlier, the government has had to make some difficult decisions, one of which is to continue the closure, one of which is the continued closure of our borders. This despite the fact that some of our original neighbors have begun to reopen. This really has to do with the ability to manage risk, because any country that relaxes its restrictions and begin to accept visitors en masse is opening itself to certain risks, including the spread of the virus among the local population, and most importantly, the pressure on its healthcare system. This is what has influenced this government's decision to be all cautious. You would note that in the recent S R N O, S R O, we have expanded the category of persons who can enter the country and coupled with that have established government designated quarantine facilities, providing persons with an option to early release if they so desire. But this does not remove any mandatory fourth in the quarantine period for persons for persons who wish to stay in their own home on arrival. We have also laid a platform for the development of the Remote Worker Program, where we will be promoting Montserrat as an ideal destination to visit to visit an extended period, and where a visitor will be able to work as if it's at their own home. You'll hear more about this from my colleague Minister, the Honorable Minister of Comes and Works, in days to come. Partners, that's who we are. As we continue to build our capacity to develop a more sustainable and competitive model of tourism development for Ireland and Montserrat, I extend my heartfelt congratulations and thanks and appreciation to you, the members of the Tourism Stakeholder Advisory Council, the Office of the Premier, and by extension, the Tourism Division, is here to help create a business environment for all tourism stakeholders. And we look forward to working more closely with you as the day is by by. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Premier. And um before we get washed out of this room, the next and final item on the agenda is the distribution of the confirmation letters to to the various members. Cherise?
Yes, they are in order.
Okay. Alphabetical order. Emmy Aston from Scuba Montserrat, representing Water Sports. Don't dive into the water. Mister Ron Bazey from Catherine, representing Arts and Craft. Mister Ganeshwar Benny from Summer Breeze Restaurant, representing the rest of food and beverage sector. Mrs. Roslyn Castle Sealy, uh Montserrat Tour and Taxi Association, representing the tour and taxi sector. Mister Norman Castle, Namcas Enterprises, representing tour operations and tour guiding. Miss Mule Gallery, Tropical Mansion Suites, representing accommodation. Miss Nerissa Golden from Golden Media, representing the media. Mrs. Angela Greenway, Educated in Tourism Studies, representing academia. Mrs. Florence Griffith Joseph of R W Griffith Investments Limited, representing the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce and Industry. And Mister Nigel Harris of Fly Montserrat, representing air transportation. You know, you can't fly in this weather. Thank you. And that's it. I I'll just name uh the the four members who were not able to make it this evening. James Scriber Daly, representing the hiking, outdoor adventure, and environment sectors. Mrs. Sarita Francis from the National Trust, representing environment, history, and culture. Rainford Culture, Don Gibbons, representing entertainment, and Dwayne Hickson, repres- uh representing the real estate sector. So ladies and gentlemen, that that is the team uh going forward for the next year and year and a month and a half. And uh, you know, I can say on behalf of the Tourism Division, And, you know, I can say on behalf of the Tourism Division, you know, we really do look forward to working with you and, you know, coming good for the island of Montserrat. You know, a place that we all call home and we want to see develop sustainably and being able to compete with, you know, people in the countries and the various niche markets in which we excel. So thank you very much for being here. We, we do have some refreshments available at the back. We may not be able to go outside right now in any event, so please partake and thanks again for being here. Thank you.